Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer for our service men and women throughout the world and for all those who have passed away in our community, especially Jerry Beller, a former member of the Scranton Police Department for over thirty years. Roll call please.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Gahn?
Here.
Mr. Rogan?
Here.
I make a motion to correct a typographical error as found on item seven B. The MOU with ECTV.
Second.
In the fourth whereas clause in both the resolution and MOU, correct the numerical amount to read one hundred and thirteen thousand and three hundred and thirty-four dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion on the floor and a second to correct a typographical error on the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so move. Please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, three eight minutes of the regular meeting of the members of the Scranton Housing Authority, held February five, two thousand and eighteen.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
Three B, Controller's Report for the month ending February twenty-eight, two thousand and eighteen.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have announcements at this time? I have two announcements to make. There was a very brief executive session held regarding potential litigation, and that is all.
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Our first speaker tonight is Les Spindler.
Evening, Council, Les Spindler, city resident, homeowner, taxpayer. Last week, Councilman Rogan, you said you had friends that own pit bulls that are very sweet. Have you done any investigating into pit bulls?
I'm not an expert on it.
Okay, well, I'm not either, but I've looked into it, and it's a fact, and I've given you some paperwork on it even. Pit bulls, a lot of their attacks are against people that own them. They can't be trusted. They turn on you like that, and they're not the only dangerous dogs around. There's many dangerous dogs. I'm not just against pit bulls, but they cannot be trusted, and it's proven. And you people just seem not to care, and I don't know what it's going to take to get you people to care, but I don't know. Something else, Councilman Evans, last week you said it's up to the mayor to put dangerous dog legislation on the agenda. Did you ever go down and ask him to do that?
Have you asked him, Les?
No, I'm paying your salary.
No, I'm just curious.
You're working for me.
I was just curious if you asked him something.
Well, I asked you the question.
You've been bringing it up for, you said last week, I think you've been bringing it up for years and years. I thought maybe at one point in time you might have had a conversation about it.
I asked you the questions. It's up to you to work for the citizens, not me. I'm not up there making thirteen thousand dollars a year. You are.
Well, the problem is that, since I've been here, you're the only one that's brought up the subject, so I didn't know if there was anybody else out there that was as concerned as you are.
Well, there are a lot of people. A lot of people don't like coming here talking.
But, you know, we see people every day, and I haven't had anybody bring it up to me, but I'll certainly ask the mayor if, next time I see him, if he's interested in doing something.
I appreciate it.
Not a problem.
Next, Councilman Donahue. Few weeks ago, you were quoted in the paper that the reason you voted for the three hundred dollar garbage fee because it was already in the budget, but you won't vote for it next year. Is that factual?
I won't vote for it in its current form without fixes, yes.
Okay, well, I saved that article, and when next year comes around, I'm going to hold you to that.
I hope you do.
Because everybody up there has said that they're not for the fee, but yet every year they keep passing it. So I think everybody up there is lying. I want to see if you're going to follow suit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ron Elman?
You gentlemen know from my past speaking up here that I love facts. Pat, my friend, it's a fact that people shun this city because of the immense taxes. Reassessment hasn't a thing in the world to do with it. There's no way in the world, I believe, Mayor Courtright's example using reassessments, why two people, two companies didn't stay here. Let me tell you something. It's a fact that the majority of properties in this county and this city are well over seventy-five years old. That's a fact. You people just don't, you just don't realize the expense of an eighty-year-old house, plus the taxes. They need heaters and roofs and plumbing work and so on over the years. And for some, somebody that has a two or three hundred thousand dollar house complaining about taxes and comparing it to a seventy or eighty-year-old house up the street is asinine. That house probably worth thirty, thirty-five thousand dollars in our market. I look at the paper every day, and almost everything is in the thirties and forties. People just unload their parents' house to get rid of it, and I can see that coming with mine sooner or later. These are what I call senior properties. There won't be no rue of thumb about reassessment like you people. This is a big lie, a third and a third and a third. Rue of thumb roughly means what is practical is not an accurate measure, right? Rue of thumb. So the example you're using isn't practical. And if you have a reassessment, for those that can afford it, they will object, hire a lawyer, and most likely get a nice reduction, while thousands out there will face the reality of higher taxes, abandonment, selling their house, or foreclosure. And we're talking about the most precious commodity these people will ever have in their whole life. Let me, let me tell you what I think would be a fair and equitable thing. What if all these seventy-five-year-old properties got an exemption? Just houses, people's homes, just one home in that ownership. You'd save the reassessment expense of having to reassess probably half the properties in the county. I know I'd be more than happy with what I pay now. Two years ago, if you remember, I told, I said something like, "I'll pay two years of my taxes right now if you let me pay the same amount instead of letting it go up a couple hundred dollars." Remember, Pat? I said something like that. I believe this would be a fair and equitable answer to the problem of reassessment that the mayor said he wants. It would protect seniors, it would protect lower-income people that have these older properties, and like I said, the city is absolutely full of them. It's up to you gentlemen to solve this, I know, but you can't use our tax money to sue us with to get your way. You got to come to some other conclusion with the county commissioners, and I think I've given you a good idea to work with. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elman. Lee Morgan?
I really enjoyed your vote tonight, and at least we know who made the motion and who seconded it. And, Mr. Rogan, you know, it's a shame that you couldn't come forward and acknowledge how the voter removed the comments from the record here. And I'm not going to ask you that question again because I'm not going to waste my time. It just proves that what kind of man you are by your actions doesn't have anything to do with me. Now, on taxes, reassessment, totally worthless. The only reason the city needs reassessment is because it refused to cut its own budget. And, I don't know, for twenty-five, twenty-seven years, it just kept a bloated government, kept borrowing money, kept making deals, kept doing all the silly things it's done for almost ever. The garages are gone, the sewer authority is gone, everything we could sell is gone. And if I was an elected city official, and I know that the mayor's looking, hoping that Mr. Amoroso will come back and save them, you know, I'm wondering, because I haven't read it, but I might do that if I get some time, I'd like to know if there's a private citizen trying to reverse the sale of the sewer authority, because if that reverses and the high court orders it to be reversed, it doesn't mean it'll immediately come back to the city, but it'll start a legal battle beyond your wildest imagination. And if you think the city's broke now after Pennsylvania American Water is done suing you, you can't even begin to imagine what kind of shape the city will be in. And, you know, the sad part is that we listen to so many silly comments by council members like Mr. Evans or Mr. Rogan, because you gentlemen met with the county commissioners in your pushing for reassessment. I don't know one single person that's paying seventeen hundred dollars a year in taxes on their property. I own a couple. They're at least four thousand. And, you know, the truth of the matter is this, people are paying 2.4 percent wage tax. The city needs to cut the budget. I asked Mr. McGough to cut it by thirty percent. I gave him a notarized request to this council to cut it by thirty percent. And I asked when the city went in to under Act forty-seven to cut the budget, and it didn't do it. And you know something? It just keeps going on and on. And what's really happened is, like I said last week, you know, the people in this city have a mentality, lace curtain Irish and shanny Irish. They're not Irish, but they've accepted the corruption that's here, and they live with it. And it's all around us, whether it's at the prison, whether it's at the courthouse, whether it's here. And, you know, I really have to say that I appreciate the county commissioners standing up, and I hope they continue to do so, and refuse to do reassessment. Now, they'll bring a political judge in like they always do, you know, the one that's been coming here visiting us, the visiting judge. He's just brought here to smooth out the waters for the politics, and, you know, the stalling by Judge Gibbons. The people here just have to realize that judges are nothing more than politicians with a law degree. That's it. They run on the ballot, they're part of the Democratic or Republican Party, and they're there to protect the system. But the truth of the matter is that people need protection. Now, there was a nice little conversation on talk radio today for a moment where a legislator in Massachusetts wanted a name taken down of a general hooker. She was upset. She said it was demeaning to women. But if anybody knew anything, they'd know that Hooker may have been the first governor of Massachusetts, and that his son was Reverend Tom, Thomas Hooker, and he is the person who gets credit for creating representative government in America, and I think he caused the founding of Connecticut. Okay, so when you take illiterates and you put them in positions of power and you elect them, this is what happens to us. They listen to what they're told, and they do what they're told. And that's why the city's the way it is, you know, and they're talking about the term Pike. Randell looted the term Pike when he was governor. That's my opinion. And we have nobody to thank but the people we elect. And you sit there week after week and don't say anything, because evidently, I really don't think you know very much. And you look at your attorney for solutions, and he's been overturned in court numerous times, and really, his opinion is his own, and he's entitled to that. He has a law degree, he's highly educated, but he's not a judge. And the only person whose opinion matters is a judge, because he's the only person that can interpret law, nobody else. Okay? And, you know, the things you've done to this city are just amazing.
Thank you.
Evening, Council. Bob Bowles, Scranton. I think you need to put the stenographer back here so we can read the record.
She'll be back next, she's on vacation, but the minutes will be posted on the website.
They'll be posted on the website, but they won't be in written form again, right?
Council's portion will be, just as has been for the year.
Right, but what we say won't be done, right?
But she will be back, though.
Well, answer my question. Why don't you ask the University of Scranton to have students in a degree program come in and record the minutes here so we could read them on both parts? They'll record for free, get extra credit. Maybe it's something you want to try and reach out to do and patronize all of us. Last week, Mr. Gahan, you had made some comments which I didn't take kindly to or take lightly, but I'm going to go over something here. You said two letters were already sent regarding the parking authority. Yet you sent one on the twenty-ninth that was sent here, and I'll read that shortly. I'll read it now because I'm going to go through the other stuff here. The twenty-ninth, you sent it to Patrick Kulik, Operation Manager, ABM Parking, Adams Avenue. Dear Mr. Kulik, at the request of City Councilman Bill Gahan, please provide the answers to the following: How much parking revenue was collected during the 2017 St. Patrick's Day Parade? Does this revenue go to ABM? Where exactly are the five hundred dedicated parking spaces within the marketplace at Steamtown Garages? Have these parking spaces generated any revenue yet, and if so, how much does this go, revenue go to ABM? If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact me. The phone number here is always. Thank you for your time. Lori Reed. Then comes your phony comment. You're lying to me that you had already sent the second letter. March fourteenth, I was here on the twelfth, March fourteenth, another letter was sent to Mr. Kulik. As a follow-up to the correspondence originally you sent to your attention on January twenty-ninth, at the request of City Councilman Bill Gahan, please provide answers to the following: How much parking revenue was collected during the St. Patrick's Day Parade? Does this revenue go to ABM? Where exactly are the five hundred dedicated parking spaces within the marketplace at Steamtown? Have these generated any revenue? Does this revenue go to ABM? The councilman would appreciate a response to his question, and it really is convenient. Please do not hesitate to contact me again. Lori Reed. Did you get an answer?
No.
I didn't think you would. I do have the answers. Because, Mr. Gahan, I went out of my way to get the answers. Didn't take me long. Some you should have did, but here you lied to me that you had already sent the second letter when it was sent after this. It's not how we talk with integrity or credibility. I made a couple of calls, and Patrick Kulik called me back later that day from his cellphone as he was driving. Keep in mind, so there is no mistake who Patrick Kulik is, he is the Operation Manager of ABM, who fully explained why we don't have five hundred spaces. Bond was floated by the city, city gave ABM the five million out of the bond. That went to Barcelona, excuse me, by ABM, not by the city. It was by ABM who gave them the five million bucks to the marketplace to eliminate a price war. Either way, the city has out five million bucks, because that's five million bucks we'll never have or never use. City lost over one million per year in revenue, and NDC and ABM should be paying the bond off and returning the money to the city. That put no one was clear on whether the city would ever see the money again. Because of your lack of transparency and lies about the letter, I'm asking that you resign your position as a councilman. We don't need people who are clueless and try and show their inability to serve the people of Scranton. You talk about transparency. You have a lack of transparency. You also have a lack of honesty. And it troubles me to even be here tonight, to even confront you with this, because at one time I thought you really had some integrity and credibility, but when you lie to me, you create a major problem as the taxpayer in this city. Your mother should have taught you that truth matters, but she was too obsessed with skunks teaching you about them rather than about truth and dignity, integrity and honor. If you want to call Patrick, his phone number is five seven oh eight six two six oh four eight.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles.
Also, I put the time, out of my time, to do this, and I didn't get paid to do it. That's your job, number one. Number two, the mall is assessed at roughly three million, eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars. If you want anything to do with this city, Mr. Gahan, and you want transparency, and you want to turn this city around, then I would suggest you make a motion to push for the reassessment of the marketplace at Steamtown. My church that I bought to save the integrity and credibility and what the city owned from our forefathers, I'm assessed at a half a million dollars for a thirty-five thousand dollar investment, and I've raised that issue here, yet I never heard you open your mouth about it.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles. Your time's up.
Yeah, I know. Well, my time may be up. Mr. Gahan, I hope your time is up, too, and you take my suggestion and you get off the council. We don't need people like you.
Thank you.
And you can tell your mother the same thing.
Yeah, well, let me just, can I ask you a question?
I have nothing to say yet.
If I may, just for one second. Well, then I'll just address the public for one second.
Don't waste your time addressing me.
Mr. Bowles questioned my integrity. I'll just ask him one question.
Don't waste my time.
Who was sitting in Lackawanna County Prison, me or Bob Bowles? One, zero.
Jack Finnerty?
A guy that sat in Lackawanna County Prison is questioning my integrity for a couple months. There you go.
Jack Finnerty is the next speaker.
Good evening, Council. Jack Finnerty, Director, Scranton Public Library. On June first this year, the Albright Memorial Library will celebrate one hundred and twenty-five years of service to the people of the city of Scranton and Lackawanna County. In preparation for that momentous occasion, over the last five years, the library has made some very significant improvements to the Albright building. Initially, we, finally, we were able to get an elevator in there, all right? And that was about a half million dollar project. And in the process, we found out that the mortar joints and some of the stonework on the exterior of the building were compromised. That led to about a one point two million dollar, eighteen-month project of redoing every inch of every mortar joint there, replacing spalled stones and some gutter work and some other stuff along the line. And most recently, we embarked upon an interior renovation project. And I'm here today to announce that as of this morning at nine o'clock, that project was essentially complete. And I'd like to take this opportunity to invite you to come at your leisure, up to the library, tour the facility, the magnificent building that was a gift of John J. Albright to the citizens of Scranton, and help us celebrate one hundred and twenty-five years of public library service. And I'm happy to say that out of all the money that was expended, which totals about two point two million dollars, only a half million of that was tax money, and that was not local tax. Excuse me, this is actually telling me I was supposed to take my medication, all right?
I thought it was coming from the podium.
My definition of retirement, all right, which is approaching, is to put this under the front wheel of my three-quarter ton truck and drive over it twice. But getting back to the issue at hand, we are fortunate in the city of Scranton and in Lackawanna County to have such a robust library system, and we have the support of all the people, and we encourage even more use. So whenever we can, whenever you can, and whenever any of the viewers or listeners are able, come down and see the magnificent gift that John J. Albright gave you in eighteen ninety-three. And I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
I just want to say, Mr. Finnerty, I know, you know, we've talked before about the benefits of the library, but I want to thank you for the job that you've done there. I think it's such a great service to the community, and Mrs. Hodowanitz will not let us forget that. She reminds us every week. But again, I want to thank you for coming here tonight, and I can't wait to see how it looks, and the pictures in the newspaper look fantastic. So thanks again.
It has been my honor and pleasure, actually, an incredible honor and pleasure, to have worked at Scranton Public Library essentially for my whole life, all right? And I'm thankful every day that I go in that building, all right?
Jack, before you go, can you tell the viewing audience, as well as everybody here, what you did with the second-floor space, especially the room that is now the public space or the speaker's space, I guess, whatever you might call it?
Absolutely. When the library first opened, June first, eighteen ninety-three, it had, on the second floor, no reference department, all right? Libraries, public libraries in that era did not always have a reference department. They were primarily circulating libraries. But what Councilman Evans is referring to is the room that's on the west side of the building on the second floor, magnificent room, although there's no bedrooms in that building. It was a lecture hall, and in it, for the first ten years of the library's existence, many traveling authors, poets, I'm sure even elected officials, academicians, were there and presented learned conversations or engaged in dialogue with citizens. What we're doing now is we're returning that to its original function. So when you go up and visit the library, you will see that that room is essentially cleared of computers and carols and bookshelves, and it is getting ready to once again serve the people of this area as a lecture hall. We envision authors coming in, talking about their books, having signings. We envision perhaps council someday meeting there, that would be, or maybe even more than once. It'd be wonderful. We will be, as we always have been, an unbiased forum for the exchange of civil dialogue, and we look forward to that. We may even have small acoustic musical acts. Some of you may have been present for the Chris Smithor concert two years ago. There are a multitude of things that we can do, because these days, libraries are not necessarily the place you go to get things. It's a gathering place for the community, one that enjoys the trust almost in every area for being unbiased, for being open, for having no particular agenda. But we do have one thing on the agenda, and that is, please come into the library and use us in whatever way you see fit.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Joan Hodowanitz?
Joan Hodowanitz, City Resident Taxpayer. I've got my written questions. This will jog your memory when you get to fifth order so you can answer some of them if you can. So, the first one, a repeat question from last week. What is the status of the Arcatus study? Will there be a public caucus? If so, when and where? Number two is a new question. Having met with the county commissioners regarding reassessment, what does the city plan to do, if anything, going forward? Will reassessment be placed on the back burner? If not, what do city officials plan to do and on what timeline? Number three, regarding the Controller's report for February two thousand and eighteen, do you know anything about the following expenditures for court awards? Three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars and twenty-five cent cents to Needle, Golden Zeal, Pascali, Gonzaga, PC, and one hundred and five thousand dollars to Fab Corp Incorporated? Is this the same one hundred and five thousand dollars listed earlier, earlier in the report under general fund expenditures as non-departmental unpaid bills? What court awards are we talking about? Are these union lawsuits, the pocket park on the corner of Wyoming Avenue and Linden Street? Keep in mind that these expenditures, which total four hundred and eighty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars and twenty-five cents exceed the entire budget for the court awards by one hundred and thirty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars and twenty-five cents. And I'll wait for your replies, uh, in fifth order. I just want to add some comments to what Jack said about the library. That is an asset to the city and every citizen in the city. It is a hundred and twenty-five years old and we are trying very hard to maintain it, not only as a public library, uh, but as an architectural treasure to the city. When you saw it this morning, okay? You're not going to build another building like that for, what would you say, a couple of million dollars?
No, tens of millions of dollars.
Tens of millions of dollars. It's unique. It's beautiful. But understand what a public library is. It's more than a place to find a book. As Jack said, it's a meeting place for the exchange of information with no political bias whatsoever. People sometimes say to me, why do you need libraries? You've got the internet. Yeah, all the companies on the internet are for profit. Look what Facebook did with its data, um, per, people's accounts. They sold it for political purposes. You know, we are a service organization. You come in, nobody's going to tell the FBI or the CIA or anybody else what you read, what DVDs you take out, what CDs. We won't give that information out. We've gone to court and we've won on that. We protect your First Amendment freedoms. We do not serve a profit motive. You try to privatize a library system, what you're doing is you're serving profit first and people second. Our agenda is people first. Remember that an educated voting electorate is the cornerstone of democracy. And so we need, we need libraries, we need journalism, we need universities, we need the exchange of public ideas. So we've got, we've worked very hard to support that library. A lot of it's with private donations and fundraising like we do at the book sale. Please, don't let it go to waste. You got two children. I want to see you at the children's library.
I was just, I was just there.
Okay, is it worth it? It is, okay? Please, don't let our efforts go to waste because it is beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to address council?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Council. Here's my question.
Could you state your name for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. Usually I sign in. Edward McCarchick, lifelong resident of Scranton for forty-five years, and I love it. Upon notifying two officers of the Scranton Police Department on Sunday, March nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen, of my future intent to record on my cellphone both audio and video of my neighbor's possible crime of the two zero one zero Pennsylvania Code Title eighteen, Crimes and Offenses, Chapter twenty-seven, assault, harassment, I was informed I could possibly be committing the crime of Pennsylvania State Law five seven, wiretapping and electronic surveillance, a felony. I have notified at least five previous Scranton Police Department officers of my future intent on at least three different occasions, starting September two thousand and seventeen and the last prior, the last one before March nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen, being February fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen, and was not informed of my possible future charge and possible prosecution of the charge listed above. Why was I not informed of this before last night at approximately eleven PM, Sunday, March nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen? And in the future, would officers inform me of possible charges when I state my future intention regarding harassment by my neighbor?
Well, uh, let me just address this for a second. Uh, I'm not, obviously, I've never been through police training, so I don't understand the laws like maybe they would. But I, I remember you were here last week speaking. Did you have any luck with your landlord in regards to them going after some of the complaints that you filed with the police department?
Yes, Mr. Carl Linett called me nine o'clock in the morning on Tuesday. He's a Deputy Executive Director of Scranton Housing Authority and he called me and we talked about it. My frustration is not with the Scranton Housing Authority, but with the police officers and their apathy and attitude sometimes upon my complaints of the harassment and possible domestic, domestic disturbances next door to my apartment.
Yeah, and I, I certainly can't, you know, attempt to address, you know, from one police officer to the other and, and how they handle a situation. But, you know, I do encourage you, if you are still having that issue with the neighbor with, I believe, was it noise violations or?
Yes, she punches and kicks the wall. She curses every time she walks up the stairs and she argues with her daughter.
Yeah, and, I mean, no, nobody should have to tolerate that. I, I know I wouldn't want to tolerate that either. Uh, I would continue to get reports on that every time they come up and then that way there's a record that could be sought after by your landlord and that is the grounds for conviction. I mean, just, just as somebody listening to the, the story for the last two weeks, I feel that's the best course.
Um, I, I tried to get a report from the police to give to my landlord, who's the manager of the housing development where I live at Scranton Housing Authority, and um, they said there were no reports. There was no report of police officers coming to the building at my address. Then I, um, last Friday, last Friday, I, I went down again. Well, first I called and I was told to talk to, to come down and talk to lieutenant, administrative lieutenant. When I went down there, he was on lunch and I had a heck of a time trying to get the report from, that I'm speaking of on February fifteenth, of the two officers who responded and told me I was wasting their time. They didn't have time for that nonsense. And the noise disturbance were of two Italians arguing that I should expect such noise. Eventually, I was able to get the name of the two officers and the incident number, but it's fairly difficult for, for me, I don't know why, but.
Sure. Well, I, I, I mean, I, I don't know how much help I could be for you, but I, I will, obviously, I will offer to facilitate for you. Uh, if you want to hang around till the meeting's over.
Sure.
I'd glad to take your name and number.
Sure.
And then maybe if I can track down something and, and get back to you and see if we can smooth this over and see actually what's going on.
Yes, definitely. I've talked to the mayor.
If there's anything I can do as a go-between for you guys, uh, see what we can do that way. But I would continue to report any issues that you are having and then pass those along and let your landlord know that only he can draw upon the reports that were placed. And I would continue, that's your role in this situation, it sounds like, and then I'll see if I can help you, uh, you know, facilitate between the, the police officers and yourself and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. And for a final, just quick one here. It's great to have the library back. I was there today and I had printed out this question for the council here. And no offense against any of the government, I live over on an olive street and when I talk to someone about where I live, I always tell them I live a block away from the most important building in the city. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to address council?
Good evening. Dave Dobson, President, Scranton. Okay, last week I ran out of time on my comments, so I'm going to resume and I'll have to start a little closer to the beginning, but, uh, okay, on gun issues, eighty percent of all deaths in America, the United States are caused, uh, are handguns, where a handgun is used. Now, there's a sixty-six and thirty-three percent, sixty-six percent are people ending their lives from pressures that they feel are beyond their control. And thirty-three percent are probably murders or extreme carelessness. Now, uh, I think I was at Columbine. Dylan Klebold, back in Colorado, were not authorized to own handguns or sawed-off shotguns or pipe bombs. I don't know what their parents were thinking. If your kid is fiddle-faddling around with such devices, don't give them a handgun, don't give them, don't let them build pipe bombs in their bedroom, please. Mr. Lonza from Sandy Hook, uh, he was psychologically challenged, he was intellectually challenged, and his mother saw fit to train him in the use of, uh, rapid fire firearms, semi-automatic, uh, and he was, gained access to them somehow. If they're left laying out, who knows? Or maybe he was just a good safe cracker because he was, uh, he, he did have some strange talents, uh, with, uh, those type of people and, uh, autistics and sometimes they have a talent where, uh, I heard one time where a guy could look at every number on a train going by and re-add them up. So, I mean, it's kind of useless, useless skill, but nonetheless, like, that's very important to note that. Some of our other people in cases of mass shootings, two-thirds of the people that commit them, like in Aurora, Colorado, and the casino, and down in, uh, the gay bar down in Florida, are legal, can legally acquire guns. Also, uh, the one out in California, uh, where he went into a city, uh, Christmas party or something and he and his wife, who wasn't authorized to own anything, uh, but, uh, she wasn't even an American citizen yet. Now, what I feel is that both sides, the NRA and the anti-NRA or anti-gun people are, they're kind of clueless. First of all, if you make people that have done nothing wrong, uh, in their lives, and our legal system's been a little messed up, I mean, uh, over the years, uh, it was, uh, we had silly social crimes to deprive people of the right to vote. And, uh, of course, that would also deny you the right to gun, uh, ownership and so forth. But at any point, uh, one side thinks that they could just run around and punish people that have done nothing wrong, and the other side, uh, thinks that, uh, you know, more and more guns in, in school. So that's why I mentioned last week that we should have a program where teachers could train in non-lethal use of things like tasers and pepper spray and so forth. They're not lethal. Even if you hit somebody that really hadn't done anything or wasn't the problem, you, you probably wouldn't kill them. And that would probably make it much easier to defend yourself than when you know you're going to be ending somebody's life. You wouldn't have to talk about it. And, uh, so, contact your congressmen and your senators. I have. And recommend these things. And we need, do need to harden schools that, you know, it's, you just can't walk in with a bazooka and take on the world with it. It's a shame that that happened. But, uh, either side, it's just going to cause more consternation with, with the fringe opinions. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I too would like to encourage anybody and everybody to go to the library, even if you're not interested in anything. I can't imagine that there's anybody who couldn't find something of interest to them in that library, but even if you just want to sit there and absorb the ambiance of that building, it is just spectacular and we are really gifted and I thank Jack Finnerty's leadership and, and the board that he's been working with for a number of years. Also, I found out today while there that library cards expire after three years. I couldn't understand why mine wasn't working and now I know. Now, back to the business at hand, uh, save some of the agenda items for next week and I would like to go over some of the prior requests I've made. Uh, Mr. Donahue is, have you, uh, do you have the UNC status? Are they current on everything?
Yes, they are current on everything.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Evans, uh, I, as I recall, uh, the president of this council gave you the authority to act for him at the parking, on the parking board?
Yes.
And?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
And I would, uh, ask that you get in advance of the meeting and make it, I don't know, available through the paper or on the website, what people are going to have to do to avoid paying for parking there. You know, I see any numbers of problems, both, uh, going in, if you assume, at one time I heard they wanted a bus cost to have a ten dollar minimum, uh, purchase in order to validate your parking. Uh, you know, I've gone down there to buy shoes and with the full intent of coming home with a pair and I don't, so, you know, is that, what's, what's it going to be there? What's it going to be at the library? What's it going to be at the tax office? Buy, buy renter there? I would like to know.
I would too.
And I think the entire public would like to know and what length of time they will be validated and what we have to do to get valid, that, earn, earn, I guess you would say, that validation. So, if you could get that, certainly.
Yeah, I'll find out for you. I know.
Next week.
They're supposed to go online for the, at the end of the month, so we haven't gotten those details yet as far as what they're doing as far as validation is concerned, but I'll find out and see where they're at.
Okay, it'd be nice to know before they.
Yeah, well, they should.
Flip the switch because I can see, even with the signs they have over the, over the, the lanes going out, I, I wouldn't even know which one to get in with the validated, you know, it has cash, it has card, it has this, it has that, but it doesn't say validated parking. So it would be nice, maybe they could have a little training course up at the library in that new room.
Okay.
That it was being facetious. Uh, more for you, Mr. Evans. A couple of weeks ago, I asked you, uh, what you have learned from Mr. Blake on the 401K legislation. Where does that stand?
Well, I talked to Larry West. He verified that he got our request, uh, but we haven't got any progress at this point. So I'll try to find out where he is as far as getting it done.
I don't recall him ever being invited into this chamber. I think it might not be.
Senator Blake?
Might not be a bad idea to, I mean, he represents, uh, most of Scranton, if not all of it.
Yeah.
Uh, I certainly think that you could compile enough things that require help from Harrisburg that. that might want to come here.
I've had many conversations with him and Larry West, but that's not a bad idea.
The bond rating, what is our current bond rating?
Sorry, I'll get that.
And then, it was in the paper not recently, and somebody referred to it tonight, that the mayor wants HJA back, but at the county meeting, Evan Weiss was there, he's got a wonderful mind, and I was happy to see him there, but he, he is HJA.
He was there pro bono because he wants to see this reassessment issue to the conclusion. So he's not, you know, he's not.
So we have no contract, there is no current contract with HJA?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, so there will be no, now, as far as reassessment goes, I think one big thing this council could do by itself is send all the nonprofits the, the hub tests. That alone, I mean, I'm gonna read the five things nonprofits have to meet. Number one, they have to advance a charitable purpose. Number two, they have to donate or render gratuitously a substantial portion of its services. May I finish the five? Thank you. Three, benefit a substantial and indefinite class of persons who are legitimate subjects of charity. Four, relieve the government of some burden. And five, operate entirely free from private profit motive. I would say a substantial quantity of the nonprofits who are legitimate nonprofits as far as the IRS is, but since we give them a tax-free status, we don't have to do that in Pennsylvania, and I think it's time that this council sent those out and get some of that revenue back in, and that would go a long way to help reducing the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
I haven't been here in a long time. Marge Craft, taxpayer. Mr. Rogan, I have a question for you. When a member of your council is being harassed, what, what, what do you, what do you do? Sit there and listen? Don't you have a gavel?
Are you referring to the, Mr. Bullis and Mr. Gahn?
That should never happen.
Well, unfortunately, it's happened the last number of weeks, and.
You're the president, you have control over this meeting, don't you?
And citizens have a right to disagree with us. I don't agree with much of what is said from residents. A lot of times it's directed at me, sometimes it's directed at my colleagues, but we try to, and as been in the past, give speakers a latitude to speak about a number of issues. Much of it doesn't pertain to the city, and really shouldn't be brought up at council meetings, but we always have.
So you have control, you have control. You could have stopped that, correct?
Could have tried.
And you didn't, you did not say a word. Everybody's laughing at us. They think city council here is a joke because of what's going on. And you, now, how many of you didn't want the record, like, the stenographer take the minutes of the meeting of the speakers? Why did you cut that out?
This has been addressed for the last four, five weeks.
No, why did you cut it out now?
It was a cost-saving measure.
Is it because you lied and they caught you in the lie?
That's absolutely not why.
I think you should resign.
I'm glad you think that, but I'm here for another three years, so.
I know. Mr. Donahue, did you agree on the, the speakers being cut off?
I wasn't aware of what, how it was done before.
So you didn't have no say in that?
I did not, I didn't have an opinion on it, I didn't know how it was done before.
Mr. Perry, did you agree on it?
Uh, yeah, we all, we all.
Mr. Gahan, you didn't agree on it, did you?
No, I didn't.
Mr. Evans, did you agree on cutting the speakers off?
Yes, I did. While we weren't cutting speakers off, we were basically no longer transcribing the, that portion of the meeting.
So, Mr. Donahue, you didn't, you didn't vote on it?
No, there was no vote taken.
So there's no vote taken, how is that, okay?
Majority of council believes it's the right thing to do.
So three against two again. Okay, Mr. Perry, I, I was wondering, did you vote, Mr. Rogan, as president?
Uh, I believe I did.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
Fifth order, five motions.
Mr. Perry, do you have any motions or comments?
Uh, yes, I have a couple of comments, thank you very much. First, I want to thank Jack for coming in, talked about the Albright Library. I can't wait to get in there to see the renovations. It's been overstated, but I don't think it'd be overstated enough how much of a treasure the community, the Albright is, and, you know, some with the, the new age, the new millennials coming up, you know, in the tech age, let's, you know, let's not forget about the beauty of a book and what it actually does mean to sit down, enjoy a book in, in a non-distracted way without seeing messages pop up and being distracted three other ways. It's just, it's just a very mind-clearing thing to enjoy a book. I know, Ms. Hoda-Wanitz, you carry the water for the library awful, awful lot, we thank you, and like Mrs. Schumacher, my card has also expired, long expired, probably a lot longer than yours. But, you know, I'll make that commitment that when I'm here next week, I'll have my new library card and, and I will be putting it to use, for sure, and I can't wait to go see it. One hundred twenty-five years, very nice, and I, I hope there's one hundred and twenty-five years more to come from the Albright. Mr. Spindler, nine out of ten times, we fall on the same side of an issue with the dangerous dog legislation, I, I'm, and I know I've said it before, but you, you speak on it awful lot, and I, you know, and I owe you a, you know, a direct opinion to it, and I'm just not on the side of a, of a dangerous dog legislation. If there was a legislation for harsher penalties for unfit or, or abusive owners, that would create a situation, I would be a hundred percent for it, I would, I would back it in a second. But just to segregate out one certain breed, I just can't get behind right now. You know, I, I hope you'll let me off the hook on that, but you do make another point about the, and it comes up from time to time, about the nonprofits. So if you promise to let me off the hook on the dangerous dog legislation, I promise that, I'm gonna start making some extra phone calls and I'll follow up, and I'll have some answers for you on what could be done through the state side on some, getting some more involvement from nonprofits in the city. All right, that promised deal? What else do we have to get into? Oh, last week, or actually, two weeks ago, we had a speaker from the Hill talk about some of the roads on ash and clay, and they're being dug up, and the water company, so we have a commitment from the water and the gas company that they're going to do some temp fills, they might already have started the temp fills on that street, not yet, Mrs. Jeffries, but, we'll, 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 we'll get that, we'll get that out soon, and as soon as I get there, I'll update it on when they start that, and they are committed to doing a full repave on that as soon, as soon as the plants start opening, they get done, but they are well, they're well aware of the issue, and I'll keep you guys abreast on that. And that's, that's all I have right now.
Thank you very much. Mr. Donahue, do you have any motions or comments?
Uh, yes, I'd just like to briefly comment on the meeting between county and city officials last week regarding reassessment. It's in my opinion that the city was blindsided with what can best be described as a circus. For one, city officials were not aware it was going to be a public meeting until twenty minutes before the meeting began. Personally, if I was informed of the meeting, I would have made sure I would have been there. The meeting, the meeting really only produced an opportunity for the majority county commissioners to once again spew their false narrative that reassessment will force people from their homes. That is simply not true. Reassessment is necessary to modernize our current tax structure, to make it fair and equitable according to current property values. When people say that Scranton is twenty years behind the times, this is the perfect example of that, except we're fifty years behind the times. In order to build a foundation for a 21st century economy, we must be willing to change with the times. That requires leadership. The only reason reassessment is still an issue is a lack of leadership. True leadership requires courage and intellect to make tough decisions that are in the best interest of all citizens. Unfortunately, we are severely lacking in true leadership at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Evans, do you have any motions or comments?
Uh, yeah, I do, thank you. First of all, I took a tour this morning of the restored and refurbished Scranton Public Library, so I'd like to thank Jack Finnerty, the library's director, and Joe and Hoda-Wanitz for acting as my tour guides this morning, taking the time out of their schedules to give me a very comprehensive look at all the work that was done at the library. You know, to say our library is a jewel would be an understatement, and now that that jewel has been dusted off and even more beautiful than ever, it's something we all should be very, very proud of. So I'd like to thank everyone involved with the library who have been such great stewards of that magnificent building, so thank you very much. Onto reassessment. Surprise, surprise. I'd like to talk briefly about the meeting held with the county commissioners and their staff on the subject of reassessment last Tuesday. First of all, I'd like to thank the county commissioners for the invitation. The city of Scranton currently has a very good working relationship with the county, but with that said, this issue is not going away, and we're gonna have to make some very difficult decisions in the very near future. I'd like to discuss first some takeaways that I have on the meeting. First of all, the inclusion of Mr. Ted Wampole, the city administrator for the city of Wilkes-Barre, was a last-minute surprise to the entire city contingent. While Mr. Wampole was very cordial, and I'm sure very good at what he does for Wilkes-Barre, I found his inclusion at the meeting a distraction as to what we were really trying to accomplish, which was to have an honest, face-to-face discussion and conversation with three county commissioners on the subject of reassessment. So I found the whole situation unnecessary, and in my opinion, a bit of a misdirection played by the county, so that's all I'll say about that particular issue. When I asked the two county commissioners, two of the county commissioners, under what circumstances, if any, would they do a reassessment, I never received an answer. I was just looking for a framework to continue the conversation, I was just looking for an opening or some hope that we can find some common ground. So it was extremely disappointing that what we got instead were more soundbites about hurting senior citizens and people losing their homes. A narrative that has been, has no basis in fact or reality, but certainly can make for good political talking points. Of course, this is a long-used narrative that's been part of the no reassessment playbook from the beginning of time. So also during the meeting, we were reminded about the results of the ballot question. Again, a question ruled invalid by the courts, written to fail, and supported by a truncated effort to educate the public. It was even suggested at the meeting that we should wait for a state solution to the problem. I would only say this, we've been waiting nearly fifty years for the county to reassess, and even longer for the state to fix the system. So for me, that is completely a non-starter. Quite honestly, I'm not sure where we are right now with the process. I do know that I, as a councilman, certainly does not want to enter into a lawsuit with another governing body. That's the last thing any of us want. But we have a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers and our property owners to ensure that there is fairness and tax equity in the system that determines their property assessment and ultimately their tax bill. That does not exist today in any shape or any form. The commissioners share that fiduciary responsibility, even more so since they are the ones that are charged with the ultimate tax, task to maintain tax equity. I know, once we get on the path of a lawsuit, there's, there's no turning back, that relationships built over the years will be strained and intergovernmental cooperation could become more difficult, but we, do we really have a choice? In many ways, we have hit the wall with this issue, and it's extremely frustrating. I'd like to give a simple analogy of where I think we are right now. When you're trying to convince someone who truly believes the earth is flat, you can provide all the documentation, all the proof, all the data that you have access to, and at the end of the day, you'll never, ever convince them that the earth is round. That's where we're at right now in our conversation with the county on reassessment, and it's a sad state of affairs. So finally, I would ask the leaders of every school district, every borough, every township, and every city in Lackawanna County, this simple question. If the city of Scranton decides to file a lawsuit against Lackawanna County to force a county-wide reassessment, will you join us? To those individuals, you can reach me at Wayne.Evans19@Horizon.net if you'd like to discuss this further. It's time to get off the sidelines and get in the game. That's all I have for now, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans, very well said. Mr. Gahn, any motions or comments?
Yes, thank you. Just to answer Ms. Hoda-Wanitz's question about the Arcadis study on stormwater, Mrs. Reed met with the city solicitor, who is the point person for this project. The Arcadis group was in City Hall recently, met with the city solicitor, the city planner, the DPW director, and the city engineer. After that meeting, the city solicitor followed up with labor costs, and our city planner provided the company with mileage of MS4 piping and inlets, which would be the storm grades throughout the city. Mr. King has worked with the county on their aerial photos, which determine MS4 and impervious surfaces. According to the city solicitor, Arcadis should have everything they need at this point, so the statuses were waiting on that draft report. In addition to that, the city has been approved for a Chesapeake Bay grant in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars with a city match of twenty-five thousand dollars. The city solicitor's gonna follow up with Arcadis in two weeks, and she stressed that they have everything they need for a preliminary report. So the city, at this point, from what I understand, does not need to give any more information. Arcadis has everything they need, and now it's about issuing a, a report. The report, from what the city solicitor has reported, should contain the information as to what to form, an authority, a private entity with city labor, a, another city department, so that's gonna be the crux of the studies. What are we creating to deal with the stormwater issue? So I hope that answers the question, and then we'll look forward to, to the report. And to answer your other question, I hope that once the report is, is issued, we can ask Arcadis to come in and present that to the public in the city council. The second thing that I had in my notes, is Ms. Hoda-Wanitz, I actually mentioned this in her comments, was regarding the controllers' report for February. As I was going through it, I had marked down the three-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand to Needle, Golden Zeal, Pascal, and Consagra PC, and a hundred-and-five thousand dollars to FabCor Incorporated. So Mrs. Reed, if we could find out from the, I don't know if it would be the law department or the business administrator, what, a little bit of a clarification on that, if we're talking about court awards or, or lawsuits. We did get an update from the city engineer, he is coming in, I believe, April ninth, to give council an update on bridge projects throughout the city, specifically the West Lackawanna Avenue Bridge. I believe it was Mrs. Schumacher or Ms. Hoda-Wanitz mentioned the credit rating. I, I too would like to know if the credit rating, the city's credit rating has been affected at all by the lawsuits. If we could find that out, I'd appreciate it. And the last comment that I have, last week it was reported that Mr. Casciano, the former business administrator, took a position in the Office of Economic and Community Development. So Tuesday of last week, I had asked the, sent an email to the mayor's office asking for the salary of that position, the job title, and the job description. Received a reply last Friday that they were going to forward that, my request up to the Human Resources Department, and then I got a response today from the Human Resources Department that this issue was discussed at a panel meeting, and I still didn't get the answer. So I would like to know, again, and I'm not sure why this is some kind of big secret, what is the salary for the, Mr. Casciano in his new position? What is the job title? What is the job description? We've heard from the mayor that he'll be working on, be the point person for Scranton tomorrow, and some other things to be more efficient. I just want to make sure that if we're combining positions and we're combining salaries, that we're not circumventing the budgetary process, and if that is the case, I'd like to know if that, in fact, is the right way to do it. And that is all I have this week, thank you.
Thank you very much. Just to follow up on a couple items that my colleagues brought up. Just to follow up on a couple items that my colleagues brought up, and I will say on the reassessment issue, my colleagues really hit the nail on the head. Was part of a meeting last week that was well-reported and as was mentioned by Councilman Donahue, going into the meeting, myself, Councilman Evans and the administration had no clue that this was a open meeting where more than two council members would have been able to attend the meeting. Furthermore, council was under the impression that there would be a slew of media at the meeting, which is fine, but some advance notice would have been appreciated. Furthermore, the presence of the Wilkes-Barre city administrator being at this meeting to really talk on why they did not favor reassessment in Wilkes-Barre really was a grand distraction from what we were trying to accomplish and what the commissioners were trying to do as far as pushing their agenda. One of the county commissioners didn't even know that this gentleman was invited to the meeting. It was the first question asked at the meeting was who invited him? Not that I object to other people being at the meeting, but the meeting, as we understood it, was supposed to be between city officials and county officials, not officials from Luzerne County. Regarding the reassessment, like I said, my colleagues really did hit the nail on the head, but there's one real-world example I just want to give. For those of you who don't know, I do work in real estate and I had a closing today of a home and scranton that fortunately sold very, very quickly. And the total tax bill between city, county and school for this property was $859.02 total. So if you look at your tax bill and see what you're paying, now again, it is a small home, so don't want to misrepresent it, it is a two-bedroom home, a smaller home. Their city total on this property, total taxes, $315.45. So I would ask, do you think it's fair that there's somebody out there paying $315.02 in total taxes, city taxes? Look at your tax bill and see what you're paying. I would guarantee that 99% of you out there are paying more than that amount. This is the inequity that we talk about. And the cost for the city to provide police protection and fire protection to that home is practically the same as it is to every other home in the city. And our system is based on property values. It is a lower-valued property, so even after reassessment, this person's taxes will remain lower than average. But that there are homes with taxes this low. Three blocks, and this home sold in three days, by the way. Two blocks down the street, there's another home that's for sale, literally three blocks down the street, same neighborhood. The total tax bill for this home is over $3,400 a year, so almost four times what the other property is paying. So you could see where there's an inequity. Now again, the other home is a little bit larger, it's a little bit newer, but they're practically in the same neighborhoods, very similar homes. So obviously, the person paying $3,400 is paying too much in tax when a neighbor a couple doors, a couple blocks away is paying less than $900 a year between all three taxing bodies. When we talk about fairness in the inequities in the tax system, this is what we're talking about. Unfortunately, some of the county commissioners, one commissioner in particular, keeps using scare tactics to get people to believe that people are going to lose their homes because of a reassessment and, you know, continues to go on about that, but there's not fairness. 50 years ago, when this home was assessed, it was probably assessed properly. But through the last 50 years, you could even look through our neighborhoods and see how much, some neighborhoods have gotten dramatically better, some neighborhoods have gotten worse. And that is not reflected in our current tax system. I'd like to reiterate Councilman Evans' call to other school districts in Lackawanna County and other municipalities in Lackawanna County to contact us. And if push does come to shove and the commissioners refuse to consider reassessment and basically stonewall the city, legal action is the only recourse. So at that point in time, if a follow-up meeting occurs and we determine a reassessment isn't going to happen through these meetings, council and the mayor have one decision to make. It's whether to let the status quo remain and not have a reassessment or to bring legal action. Personally, I think we should bring legal action. The previous council took a vote and it was a 4-1 vote to proceed in that manner. That's something that it may come to, but if it does, I know for myself, I would much prefer for it to be Scranton and a number of other municipalities filing that suit instead of Scranton on a standalone basis. Because even at our meeting, one of the county solicitors tried to, you know, say that the issues regarding reassessment are unique to Scranton because of higher taxes. But the lack of new construction is prevalent throughout Lackawanna County. Even in some of the areas where homes are selling very, very quickly, because of the lack of reassessment, new homes are not being built. And that's a problem. We do need growth within our county and within our city to help grow our tax base. So again, I'd like to urge all those other officials to reach out to any number of us, call our office, call the mayor's office if you'd like to be a part of a potential lawsuit. We hope it doesn't come to that, but if it does, we are preparing to make those steps. And I know one of our speakers did ask about the reassessment, so I think that pretty much answers the question. It is not being put on the back burner. It's something that is still very active in my mind and with all of our council members. That is all.
5B for introduction and ordinance amending file of the council number 121996 as amended entitled, "The City of Scranton Subdivision and Land Development Ordinance to amend the approval process for lot line adjustments, annexations and minor revisions of approved plans."
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee. So moved. On the question?
Yes, on the question, just want to read a portion of a letter that was sent as backup to this legislation from our city planner, kind of explaining what this legislation is all about. According to Mr. King, our city planner, this amendment would allow for staff approval of certain minor subdivision plans instead of approval by the city planning commission. This amendment would only apply to lot line adjustments as defined in the subdivision and land development ordinance. A lot line adjustment is the movement of property line without the creation of any new lots, for example, the transfer of a small portion of property to your neighbor. The planning commission has been tasked with handling a great deal of these in the last few years. Requiring applicants to wait for monthly commission meetings has caused some undue delays in these minor matters. In my experience, the commission has never received any comments, questions or concerns from the public regarding these types of subdivisions. Thank you.
Anyone else on the question?
On the question, as a former planning commission member, I totally agree with Mr. King's thought process in this because it is almost silly to have a full board of the planning commission meet. If the only thing on their agenda sometimes would be these minor lot line adjustments that could be taken care of administratively within the, his office. So this is a great idea. It makes for effective government, it streamlines the process and saves time for the applicant as well. So I fully support this.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5C for introduction and resolution, appointment of Tara Man Shankar, 840 Wheeler Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania 18510, as a member of the Human Relations Commission effective February 27, 2018. Mr. Shankar will be replacing Rabbi Moshe Sacks, who resigned on September 18, 2017. Mr. Shankar will fill the unexpired term of Rabbi Moshe Sacks, which is scheduled to expire on October 14, 2018.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee. So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5D for introduction and resolution, reappointment of Joseph D. Antoni, 1331 Cornell Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania 18504, as a member of the Board of the Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority for an additional five-year term. Mr. D. Antoni's prior term expired on December 31, 2017 and was held over to February 21, 2018. His new term will, excuse me, will be effective February 21, 2018 and will expire on December 31, 2022.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5D be introduced into its proper committee. So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5E for introduction and resolution, reappointment of John Granahan, 1504 Price Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania 18504, as a member of the Board of the Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority for an additional five-year term. Mr. Granahan's prior term expired on December 31, 2017 and was held over to February 21, 2018. His new term will be effective February 21, 2018 and will expire on December 31, 2022.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5E be introduced into its proper committee. So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5F for introduction and resolution, reappointment of William Lazar, 677 Mary Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania 18508, as a member of the Board of the Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority for an additional five-year term. Mr. Lazar's prior term expired on December 31, 2015 and was held over to February 21, 2018. His new term will be effective February 21, 2018 and will expire on December 31, 2020.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5F be introduced into its proper committee. So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5G for introduction and resolution, reappointment of David Funnough, 1812 Academy Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania 18504, as a member of the Board of the Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority for an additional five-year term. Mr. Funnough's prior term expired on December 31, 2014 and was held over to February 21, 2018. His new term will be effective February 21, 2018 and will expire on December 31, 2019.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5G be introduced into its proper committee. So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5H for introduction and resolution, reappointment of Jerry Weinberger Esquire, 611 North Webster Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania 18510, as a member of the Board of the Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority for an additional five-year term. Mr. Weinberger's prior term expired on December 31, 2014 and was held over to February 21, 2018. His new term will be effective February 21, 2018 and will expire on December 31, 2019.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5H be introduced into its proper committee. So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, no business at this time. Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for Adoption, file of the council number 8, 2018, amending file of the council number 95, 2015, and ordinance entitled, "Amending File of the Council Number 79 of 2015," and ordinance amending file of the council number 145 of 2007 entitled, "And Ordnance Renaming the Emergency and Municipal Services Tax to Local Service Tax and by imposing a withholding of $52 for the calendar year 2015, and the same shall remain in full force and effect annually thereafter by increasing the local services tax withholding from $52 to $156 for the calendar year 2015 and providing for an exemption from taxation for any person whose total earned income and net profits from all sources within the municipality is less than $15,600 for the calendar year 2015 under and pursuant to the Local Tax Enabling Act, Act 511 of 1965, PL 1257, 53 PS, Section 6924.101 et cec., and the Municipalities Recovery Act, Act 47 of 1987, PL 246, 53 PS, Section 11701.101 et cec., and their respective amendments effective retroactive to January 1, 2018. This tax is expected to generate approximately $4,810,000 in revenue in calendar year 2018 by enabling the city of Scranton to continue to levy the local services tax at the fiscal year 2017 rate for fiscal year 2018 for a total maximum local services rate of $156 for the fiscal year 2018 effective retroactive to January 1, 2018 and providing for an exemption from taxation for any person whose total earned income and net profits from all sources within the municipality is less than $15,600 for the calendar year 2018."
What is the recommendation of the chair for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second. On the question, roll call please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number 20, 2018, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into an amendment to the Memorandum of Understanding by and between the City of Scranton and Electric City Television, setting forth the terms and conditions regarding the obligations of ECTV to the city and the disbursement and use of educational and governmental capital grant funds by amending Section 3BII of the memorandum regarding the disbursement of the remaining two installments as more fully described in Exhibit A attached here too and incorporated herein by reference here too.
As chair for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7B. Second. On the question, roll call please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number 21, 2018, reappointment of Santa Jade Corby, also known as Sandy Corby, 401 Williamsburg Lane, Scranton, Pennsylvania 18504, as a member of the Board of the Scranton Parking Authority for an additional five-year term. Mrs. Corby's prior term expired on June 1, 2017 and was held over to February 21, 2018. Her new term will be effective February 21, 2018 and will expire on June 1, 2022.
As chair for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7C. Second. On the question, roll call please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Meeting's adjourned.